Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session for April 11th, 2023. Why does that date seem significant? 4/11? Huh? Oh, maybe. It's been a long day. All right, everybody, please mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And Rob, could you please do a roll call for attendance?
Certainly. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Kreip?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Earborn? President Rins?
Here.
Okay, trustee Apitoff has provided. Am I getting feedback? You hearing an echo?
Yes.
Testing one, two, three, testing one, two, three. Rob needs to be quiet. Oh. Okay. Trustee Apitoff has provided the required notice that he is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to work obligations. Our rules provide that trustee Apitoff may participate remotely unless two-thirds of the board objects. Is there any objection? Seeing none. Trustee Apitoff may now participate remotely, fully, in the meeting, and the minutes should so reflect. Item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody who is interested in sharing their thoughts with village council on any item that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to come on up and share your thoughts with us. Good evening, Ted.
Good evening. Hi, Ted Winachenko. So, I am here to talk about the beaches. Specifically, I haven't gotten a chance to send the update to my little treatise on what's gone on with our beaches, because although I've been really trying hard to get the historical background behind what happened at Oak Street, the village seems to be uninterested in providing, being transparent in what may or may not have occurred back then. So, gonna keep working, but it is interesting to me, because I understand that some of this may take time, and some of this may take money, and there are many burdens on the council, and things have to be prioritized. That doesn't negate the fact that, as it stands now, the village is allowing private property owners to seize public land in direct contradiction to the last guidance the city council, the village council provided on this matter in 2000. The village has, I think, a duty to follow that, and it may have been forgotten. There may have been a loss, an institutional loss of memory, but the fact is, is that these things have been decided by the council, and they need to be addressed. They shouldn't be delayed, and these are things that do not cost real money, right? We can, the council can, the village can, contact owners and tell them, hey, your stuff is in the right of way, get rid of it. The village can remove signs, which the village itself acknowledged the code does not give it the right to do in 2000 and 2001. The council never changed the code to provide staff the authority to put up signs closing streets. In fact, if we go back to, I love finding things, if we go back to the 1880s, the Supreme Court, in talking about a barge that was half-sunk on the Chicago River, said, "It is settled principle of the common law that whatever obstructs travel in public highways and ethical streams is a common or public nuisance, which may be removed and abated by any of the king's subjects." So, the fence on Willow, there's no reason that Willow, the public highway, should be blocked to public travel. Oak Street is closed at night. Why? I noticed that there was a robbery in the Hubbard Woods area. No one talked about putting up fences and shutting off streets in Hubbard Woods because there was a robbery. Why is it that some homeowners have preferential treatment and deference from the village while others do not? The street and beaches are common to all of us. They are public, and they should be maintained that way. And while you may want to reconsider this and want to, and I think should spend money fixing the problem, that doesn't negate the fact that, right now, today, the village should be actively enforcing its prior decisions, the council's prior decisions, and removing barriers to the public that shouldn't be there. That's all. Oh, and then I also came across the fact that, in 2006, the village was informed by FEMA that you needed to issue floodplain permits for construction of special flood zones, and since those weren't issued for all that construction along the lake, in theory, that might all be invalid, because IDNR requires all other permits to be issued before they will authorize theirs. So, all that construction is in the special flood hazard area. No permits were issued by the village. Just a...
Thanks, Ted.
Something I can add.
Anybody else? Seeing none? Item three, gas-powered leaf blowers. For over 25 years, the village of Winnetka has had a ban on the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers between the months of June and September. Four-month ban. Heightened awareness of the use of gasoline leaf blowers occurred during the pandemic when more residents were at home, causing an increase in noise complaints. Actually, I was complaining about it a lot before then, but... As a result, several communities in our area agreed to establish a regional leaf blower working group to evaluate equipment options and regulations that could be considered by each community. The regional working group included 12 units of government, the Illinois Landscape Contractors Association, and two landscaping companies. Winnetka participated in this group and were represented by former trustee and Go Green Winnetka member King Poor and former, eh, former police chief Mark Hornstein. Tonight, interim police chief Brian O'Connell is here to present a summary of the findings and policy recommendations for the village council to consider related to the leaf blower. Also, King will be providing some comments after Brian's presentation. And I just wanted, before we even get started, is just to thank, thank you, King, so much for stepping up and doing this. You know, I was thinking about this on Sunday when I was out walking the dog, that somebody, a homeowner was out with a, with a gas leaf blower, and so I started thinking about the whole leaf blower thing. And I, I thought, you know, there's so many people in this community that we hear from that are unhappy with something, or want something different, or want something changed, and you hear the complaint, but rarely do you see somebody step up and actually be willing to take action. And, you know, when, when we talked about this, however long ago it was, it was a while ago, you know, you didn't hesitate a second. And I think, as you understand, public service, and really, alls I wanted to say here was, thank you for giving back to your community yet again, and we really appreciate you stepping up and doing this.
My pleasure, and look forward to the conversation tonight.
Yeah, be a good one, for sure. So, Brian, take it away. I had the pleasure of serving with King, by the way, too, so I'm doubly blessed here, so.
Thank you, President Rins, council. I'm here tonight to present the subject of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in the study session. So, a little bit of background here before we get into the meat of the presentation is, one, 1994, the original village of Winnetka ordinance regarding leaf blowers became an ordinance. Before 2018, the police department was primarily complaint-based response to gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Post-2018, the police department really took a proactive approach to enforcement. And as you mentioned, President Rins, in 2021, the PD began this study, as well as a collaborative effort with the landscapers and the, and the companies to adhere to restrictions specifically about them signing a pledge. So, the work group was established. The purpose of that was to prepare a report on leaf blower regulations and their impacts. The final report was issued on December 15th, 2022, and the participants are in the chart below. As we go through this, I would, you're gonna see me focus primarily on just a handful of municipalities: the City of Highland Park, the village of Northbrook, the village of Glencoe, the village of Winnet, and of course, us. How our current regulations stand, it's under Section 9.16.02D21. This is under a public nuisance. It prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers anytime between, basically, June and September, which is a four-month ban. The time restrictions are posted here, October through May, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekends and holidays. The fine for this is $100, and this is a flat fee. This does not escalate per violation of identified violator. So, this is a flat rate, no matter how many times we identify a violation. And currently, we do not have a licensing process. So, just a little history on the enforcement that we've done since 2018. I'm sure we've had conversations before under prior chief Mark Hornstein. These numbers were significantly lower prior to 2018, but we really began to see the increase in numbers in 2021. The decrease in 2022, I think I would like to contribute that to the enforcement in '21, the education that was given to landscapers, and the work of our, our CSO staff. We actually documented 42 incidents that we were in the community and observed compliance with a battery-operated leaf blower by landscapers. So, about 73 contacts in 2022. The impacts, and as we begin to get in this, I'm gonna refer to the study, but three, three primary impacts were identified in the study. Environmental, the comparison of noise pollution and air. Technology, the power of the gas-powered leaf blower versus the electronic, the electric battery-powered ones, and the cost. So, if I refer to page five of the study session, or the study, excuse me, it goes into quite a bit of detail when measured within 50 feet away. The average battery-powered blower ranges 52 to 65 decibel, and at the max of the gas-powered, it's 75 to 83 in comparison. Each 10-decibel increases in sound is twice as loud as heard by the human ear. So, that is just the comparable of, of the noise. The air, of course, is, is the pollution, high source of localized emissions that include hazardous air pollutants and carbon dioxide. If you put these into some areas of our community, schools, parks, where even, even younger children are, King Poor and I had a discussion about the impacts that could potentially be there for younger children with a lowered lung capacity. Technology, the, currently, they're, on the other side of this, I'd like you to appreciate that there currently is not a battery-powered leaf blower that is as powerful as the gas. So, when it comes to a further part of my conversation regarding exemptions, that I think that is part of the consideration here for the study. And lastly, cost. And, and specifically on page seven, I think this is where this impacts potentially landscaping companies, is they did a study from the comparison of just two replacement pieces for, for the crew, all the way through their, all the way through what they use on a daily basis, and the, and the total difference on the one landscaping crew came out to, the total was $11,000. But the, the chart here breaks them down, the conventional use, the transitional use, and the ecological. So, they put a lot of time into the numbers on this, but there is a significant cost difference when it comes to a gas-powered leaf blower versus battery. So, policy considerations. There were four that came out of this study. Discussions of status quo, no change. Consideration of a four-and-a-half-month restriction from May 15th to September 30th. A nine-month restriction, basically allowing for an April, October, and November cleanup of primarily the heaviest time with wet leaves, where gas-powered leaf blowers could, could be a benefit. 10-month restriction, only allowing in October and November. And then there was actually part of the study that discussed a 12-month ban, but it was, it was not, it was not recommended as part of this consideration. So, this is kind of the focal point of my presentation tonight, and I have to pause here and acknowledge, recognize, one of our police record, or record specialists, Kim Hodge. Kim Hodge was instrumental in, in getting all of this information to date for us. This is both off of council meeting minutes, as well as personal phone calls that we made to each municipality over the last four to six weeks. Unfortunately, village of Glenview, we did not get a response back from them with, with a few different phone calls. And like I said, I would like to just focus on the bottom half of this chart, because these are the villages that look like they're taking action, or their plans to meet are considering a nine-month ban. So, when you see the city, or the village of Kennelworth, they currently have a four-and-a-half month ban. The city of Lake Forest does not. They have a nor, a noise ordinance, so they, they basically, when you see those, that means that if a, if a complainant in town calls, and it, and it meets the criteria of a noise complaint, they could take action, but nothing specifically addressing the leaf blower. Village of Glencoe, who I, I have to say is taking a, a, a primary responsibility here, and, and, and has given us the most information to date, they, this, that's what they currently have. They have a, almost a cutoff section here where they go from May 15th to September 15th, and then they pick it up again in December to March, and then the city of Highland Park and Willmet. I'd like to point out, though, every one of those that is considering a nine-month ban is likely to implement this in 2024 or later. Nothing that we were able to collect for this year. So, staff recommendation. It would be, it would be the recommendation to consider a nine-month restriction, similar to the other municipalities prohibiting gas-powered leaf blowers from December through March and May through September, allowing for three months of cleanup for the heaviest identified months. I would also say with the consideration for no exemption for public property. Your consideration for an exemption for the park district property to include the golf courses, and, and what, I'd like to just take a second here and recognize, in the study, the batteries at max capacity for an electric-powered leaf blower last approximately one hour. So, if you can appreciate the volume of leaf cleanup potentially on golf courses, you would need a significant amount of batteries for, for an assignment like that. I'm asking for consideration for an annual licensing requirement. Glencoe has a, a very good example of that. Highland Park also has an example. And then, beginning implementation in 2024, allowing for education, community outreach, and also having a very respected appreciation for residents in this community that already have existing contracts with, with landscaping vendors, and giving them time to prepare for a 2024 contract. So, as my strat, the strategy that I have discussed here tonight would be, in 2023, we continue education and outreach. With the residents, we would disseminate messaging through utility billing, the Winnetka Report, the village and police website, our social media platforms, eWinnetka, and of course, door hangers, similar to what we've been doing with refuse. With the landscaping companies, we would continue with the notice included in the annual mailing that, that is also coming up soon for us, regardless of tonight's conversation. I would plan to be doing that anyway for this year. Informational flyers onsite as we identify potential violations or have contacts with landscaping companies, and then continue with the, with the warning notices. And with that, I have, end with the presentation, and I open it up to discussion or questions with me.
Sure. Well, King, why don't you go ahead and take off, and then we'll kind of jump into this thing in, in...
Glad to appreciate the chance to come back here. Your red is dead.
That'll help, yes, okay, I should know that. Thank you for the chance to come back. I was looking at my notes from last year. It was just about one year exactly. I was here on April 12, 2022, when we were just getting started, started with this. And so, it's sort of come full circle here, and I, I want to thank Brian for that really thorough and thoughtful presentation, and I also want to thank Mark Hornstein, because he and the Winnetka Police Department have been leaders in this whole effort. Just a little bit of history before we get into the, the study itself. As, as a number of you know, but for those who may not have heard, this was, this really came out just very, is almost spontaneously during the spring of 2021, we're in the midst of the pandemic, and people are at home, and this is becoming more intolerable than ever, and one thing led to another, and Go Green Willmet, Go Green Winnetka, we put our thoughts together, and we thought, we need to have a summit. So, we started having groups of Zoom meetings. They got to 90 people with residents, village officials, from all over the North Shore, and it was a really robust discussion about why these gas-powered leaf blowers are a menace to public health, not just the noise, but, but for the air pollution that, that comes out of them. And after all that discussion, at the end of '21, there was enough interest to create this 11-member regional working group, and that's what was launched at the early part of '22, and we, it, it was a year-long project to put all this together. We had different subgroups that we, we had, and we, we studied each part of this. It's a, a very comprehensive study of all of, and the, well, it's 66 pages, you can get the drift of it pretty well from the first nine pages, and I thought Brian summarized it very nicely. And just to hit a few highlights here, one of the thing to keep in mind, what, what was, what was our purpose in doing this? First, it was to gather the data, and there's a lot of good science now that there hasn't been maybe even 10 years ago on the, really, the, the public harm that these, these can cause, and that's all detailed, and we, we relied upon what I consider sort of the goal standard. American Green Zone Alliance is, is one of the, is probably the premier electric landscaping organization, and they're based out of California. We had their executive director give a presentation to us, and he had some very, very good insights on all this. And then we also relied upon Quiet Communities, a really interesting organization out of Lincoln, Massachusetts, and they are a font of scientific data on what goes on when these things start revving up. So, we, we were focused on gathering the data, also getting a variety of voices, and as you can see here, this wasn't just residents or village officials. We, we asked the landscapers to have a place at the table. We had the Illinois Landscape Contractors Association. We had Mariani and Scopoletti, two of the biggest landscapers on the North Shore. They were actively participating. We had some very good back and forth with them on, on a number of different issues, and, and then that all culminated in this, these best practices that you see on page two and three. And one of the other purposes was standardization, because we've heard complaints over the years that, well, you know, Glencoe ends their ban on the 15th, but Winnetka's on September 15th, Winnet, Winnetka's September 30th, and Willmet starts on May 15, Winnetka starts on June 1st, and, you know, it's asking a lot of landscapers to try to keep all this straight. If we could, and we could standardize this, it would, it would help in so many ways, and we found this from, first, these informal summits, that historically, this has always been sort of just one village going after this problem, but when we, we got together, there was just, was so much more we could do when we were united in, in a common purpose here. So, standardization is one of the purposes that we seek to implement with, with this study. So, there's policy options, and just as Brian said, we've got policy option. One is basically do nothing, standard, you know, the status quo, and then we have the, the 10-month option and the nine-month option, and just a little history on where those come from. The 10-month option comes from our presentation from the American Green Zone Alliance, and their executive director, a guy named Dan, maybe, just, he's got so much history on all this, but he said, in certain parts of the country, you could probably have a 12-month ban, because you don't have the heavy leaf volume. But in New England, Midwest, you do have heavy leaf volume for the months of October and November, and the, the state of the, the best technology is such now that it, it would, they, they can't compete with a, a gas blower for those, those two months. And so, I thought he set down the marker for a, a good, a good case for a 10-month ban. And that, then the landscapers had their say, and they said, well, look, we, we've got spring cleanup, we need, we, we need the power of the blowers in, in, in one month in the spring, in April. I guess you could debate that, you know, once all the heavy leaf volumes gone, do, do you need the nine-month, but the momentum is already building for the nine-month ban here, as Brian said. You may have read in the Tribune a couple of weeks ago that Glencoe is already going forward with the nine-month ban. I checked with their village manager yesterday, Phil Corrali. It's on their docket for April 20 next week, so they're gonna introduce an ordinance for a nine-month ban next week. I also checked with the village manager of Willmet, Michael Bremen, and tonight, they're introducing a nine-month ban in Willmet. I understand that, and, and thanks to the, the police department for their good work on this, they've, they've really done some good checking on where other villages are going. I, I think it's, you know, Highland Park, they, one of the co-chairs is from Highland Park, I think they may be well going to nine months, Kennelworth. So, you've really got the potential of having Willmet, Highland Park, all nine months, and that would be really an important step forward if you could do that. And so, if we decide to, to join already, you know, Kennelworth, I mean, Glencoe, Willmet, I mean, that would be, that would be, that's the most consistent right now, and, I mean, you, you could, and I think even in the Tribune article, they said, well, this is, you know, where we are now, we can revisit this, because things may change, but this is, for 2023, a nine-month ban is a big step forward in terms of addressing this issue. So, if you take the, the step of joining these other communities with the nine-month ban, then you've got issues about implementation. Brian talked about not making it effective until 2024. I think that, that sounds like a fair way to go, because you, you really can't do it this year, and you, people need some notice on that, so, and I think to push it off any longer, I don't think there's any real justification for doing that. We're, we're here. Enforcement. Brian and I talked about, would nine months pose a problem? And it sounds like it would not, and, and I want to really commend the Winnetka Police Department again for their innovative approach to, I would call carrots for this, because when we had the summit, the one person everybody wanted to hear from was Mark Hornstein on the Winnetka pledge, and they thought that was a really interesting way to encourage landscapers to obey the law, of all things, but, but they, it really, I think, was the, the combination of that, and also the increased enforcement in 2021 that really bore fruit in 2022, because there were far, I, I just, I mean, I walk all over the village, north, south, east, west. Because there were far, I just, I mean, I walked all over the village, north, south, east, west. And I could just tell last summer, it was, it was so much better.
It's different.
It was, it was different. And I, and I started noticing more and more landscapers with the electrics. And that's just, that's just where it's going. Some are going completely electric for mowers too now and trimmers. So that was, that was a big positive. And I think we really can thank the police department for their good work on, on that. Public education, that is also, as the report says, it's a critical element for what this is all about. Glencoe and Willmet have had some really innovative door hangers, other ways to reach out to the public. I know every year we talk about this in the Winnetka Report. That's a good start, but I think this is something that deserves kind of its own attention, as Brian was talking about. I mean, this is, this is great. This is really, I think this is either Willmet or Glencoe. This is like a door hanger or something they nailed. And it starts out, did you know, there are so many good reasons to go electric, use a rake or leaf blowers? And then it goes on to the, obey the law and be a good neighbor to all. Gas-powered leaf blowers are prohibited in this area from, et cetera. It's very friendly. It's very neighborly. And that's what a lot of this is designed to do, is just reach people on a very simple basis. Like, we know you want to do the right thing. Be a good neighbor. Be a good neighbor. And I think there's a great potential for public education. I know, speaking with Liz Kunkel with Go Green Winnetka and also Patrick Hanley for the EFC. There's a great potential for public education. If we can educate the public on this, it's, it's going to be transformative. Because as Brian said, when you look at the cost, they have the, I guess you might call like, the most expensive is using the leaf, leaf blowers for like, the most pristine. And then it's like more transitional and then more ecological. There's, so as people appreciate that maybe, you know, the electrics can, you know, serve more of a purpose more of the time. I don't know that, you know, but all this takes time and it takes public education. So I think that's something that, it's a great opportunity for us. If we, if we put this nine-month ban in place and join the other municipalities doing that, a great opportunity for that. And then I'm really pleased to see the recommendation not to exempt public property. Because we've got to lead. I mean, if we're, we can't tell our citizens, you can't do this. But then you see somebody from the village, and I know the village is, you've got a contract with Christie Webber. You're not using, I guess. But I just tell you a quick story. I was, last October, I was at Dwyer Park. And if you've ever been out there in the afternoon, there's just all kinds of preschool kids out there. And just having a great time. And a guy from the park district, and he was, he was doing his job. But if you can picture, you know, like, like the little sandbox area by Dwyer Park, he revs up this thing and there are these three, four, and five-year-olds.
Oh my God.
And as Brian alluded to, I mean, they're more vulnerable. Little kids are more vulnerable to this kind of thing. Their ear canals are smaller, their lung capacity is smaller. And I thought, this is not, this is not right. And we, you know, here's our park district and Kennelworth already does this. I mean, they already tell their, no use on public property. And I don't think it's a big reach to do it. Maybe, maybe the golf course is another story. But, and I've seen this down at the beach before where I, one morning, walking up by Christ Church, I saw two guys from the park district. It was the middle of the summer. There was, I mean, it was, you know, maybe five leaves on the sidewalk and they're, and like, why? There was no good reason. And it just, but it was part of the job. And I don't fault these guys because they're doing what they're told to do. But if we're going to ask our citizens to do this, we can ask park district. I mean, even the schools.
Library.
And the library too. I mean, I, I was by Skokie School, I think it was last year, opening day. I was just out there with, and all these kids are out there. And there's a, the custodian is running one of these, like, no, this is, that's. So I think, having seen enough of this, there's a good reason not to exempt public property from this. And I know Glencoe does not allow it with their, their Public Works does not use the, the gas blowers. So I think it's really important that we, this is something we put in the ordinance. And then finally, there's this, I thought it was a very interesting discussion about financial incentives or subsidies for small companies. And there's, there's probably all kinds of different ways you can implement this. And you could say, a company under so many employees would get a subsidy to buy electrics of so many dollars if they show a receipt that they have bought an electric and they, that's something, that's not something you need to, that's not really an ordinance so much as it is just, I think that's part of the public education package or whatever. So, so I, I'm just really grateful the way this came together. I mean, this was a labor of a lot of different communities. I don't remember from all my years on the, on the council that we ever had 11 municipalities get together to address a common problem like this and do it in a way where it was so collaborative and we were able to, it was all very civil discussion in these meetings. There were differences of opinion, but there was civil discussions in that we were able to come up with a product like this that, I mean, it's, it's got so much good data. It's got the different voices. We've got best practices. And I think it provides a really good way forward with a nine-month ban right now, which would standardize it. So that's, that's a brief overview and look forward to more discussion.
Great. So we fundamentally, functionally have a nine-month ban now.
Pretty close.
Because we've taken the summer out of play and. Well, I mean, and as soon as the landscapers leave it after Thanksgiving. Oh, they do?
It's so lazy.
They do? Never mind.
My question is technically even under our current ordinance and the one, battery-powered leaf blowers could be used seven days a week, 24/7? Yeah, okay, so I'm thinking maybe we broaden this ordinance to cover all leaf blowers.
So we could all have quiet evenings?
Well, I mean, no one's going to go leaf blow two in the morning, but.
The current, the current.
Would it be a noise ordinance issue?
So the, when, when they're allowed, the times are, the times are regulated.
They were great.
Saying is gas-powered leaf blowers. And so I'm asking, battery-powered leaf blowers still are noisy, not as noisy? And right now, even under our current ordinance and the proposed, people could operate them all year round in any time of day? Is that, is that right?
There's a time limitation.
There's a time limitation.
For battery, because everything I'm seeing just says gas-powered. So I'm saying, should it be all leaf blowers? So are we saying you can't use gas?
No, that, that makes, yeah.
For nine months a year, but you can use a battery while powered one at five in the morning on Memorial Day.
You could, but.
So I think we should.
Yeah, but I think effectively I see the landscaping crews, at least in my, just raking. Tina, could you turn your microphone off?
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. You know, I see landscapers raking before 7:00 AM. So they must, even though they have battery, you know.
So I guess I'm saying.
We should just clarify that, you know.
We should get out ahead of it and not leave the loophole. And that's.
I think, but my point is, I think they're complying with that.
Whatever loophole was there, I know our noise ordinance is written pretty broadly. So the police would have the discretion to respond and shut something down that was like nine o'clock or five o'clock in the morning or whatever.
So did the group agree on dates so that we can align or?
Great question.
Not September 30th and October 1st, you know, variations.
We're May 15th now.
Well, the, the agreement of the, the nine-month, the nine-month ban runs from October 1 to November 30 and April 1 to April 30. And.
Or the permitted time.
The permitted time. The permitted time, right. Three months, that'd be, so they only get.
October, November, and April.
Those, that's, that's the nine-month ban. So it's, everything outside of that is, is, that's, that's the nine months.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's where you get that. And then as far as effective date, I think that's something that, I think every, I believe people are all going to land like, you know, January 1st, 24.
No, I mean, as far as the, I mean, the enforcement dates.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because summer, May 15th, at least when I was going through this, nobody seems to be on the same schedule. They're all, they're on the same ballpark, but May 1st, May 15th.
That's, that's exact, that's one of the problems was that Willmet and Glencoe are May 15th. And then Winnetka's June 1st. So that, the idea would be, make sure, right now, the way this is put together, it would be that the ban starts May 1st, runs to September 30. I mean, I'm sorry, yeah. And then, then you've got the two months cut off on December 1st. And I have seen people on warm days in December using these things, you know. And so, but there's, you know, if you, you can't get it by November 30, well, then you got to come back in the spring. I think that's, you know, it's, it's not.
The reality king is if somebody's waiting for a cleanup on December 2nd, the guys are going to go out and blow the leaves and nobody's going to say a word to them.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So, but at least it, it, what it does effectively, Chris, I think, is that, you know, it moves our date, you know, back a month. So it's sort of.
But wouldn't it be, and this is, because I know, Brian, you mentioned that, that one of the issues was this alignment issue, that they don't know whose rules they're operating under because they, for some reason, don't get it.
Well, now it'll be really, really simple. Because if, if we've got Willmet to Highland Park, nine months, that's, that's very easy.
Right, I guess my question really is, can, May 15th or May 1st? If we've got two municipalities on either side of us going May 15th. Oh, no, but that's, that's the existing.
Hey, Chris, I, Chris, I agree with you. I think it almost has to be on May 15th. April, April 1 to April 15th are pretty crappy days, I mean, weeks. I'm not sure if half these guys can even work those days.
Aren't we saying it's June 1st, or I'm sorry, May 1st through December 1st?
I think we said April, it starts April 15th and it ends May 15th.
No, no.
To make it easy, you can blow in April, October, November.
Yeah, that's.
Say again, Andy?
You can blow in April, October, November.
Perfect.
And you can suck the rest of the air.
Right. But on the alignment issue, we're 15 days off of everybody else. Oh, but everybody's aligning to May 1st now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's.
I got it.
So we're, we're curing the misalignment with this proposal now.
Gotcha.
Was there any, I, I'm still going back to the being able to use them all year round thing a little bit because even in the summer, people are using them to blow the grass that appears on walks and driveways. And I mean, I remember my father's memorial service I'm holding in my backyard and ah, they're blowing grass trimmings. So even if they're using battery power. But one of my questions, well, just relatedly, is, was there any thought to, one, just banning use on holidays, period? Because I think right now, isn't the proposal still allow holidays? Which of course, in that window, I don't know what holidays would fall.
April, Halloween, and Thanksgiving.
Yeah. And then two, any discussion of shortening the window? In other words, does it really need to go to 7:00 PM? Could it end at 5:00 PM? So when people come home and they're having dinner, they come home from work. Well.
The residents who are doing it their own yard work after work, I mean.
Well, I, you know, I guess I'm asking, was there any discussion of that? And, and or even on Saturdays, does it need to go to 6:00 PM? I'm thinking of young people.
We really, our focus was really on the gas-powered blowers. And the idea is that if we could get, let's see.
Me and my granddaughter had this problem with liquids going down the wrong pipe.
It's epidural. But we, our, our, our focus was on the, on the gas-powered blowers. Because, you know, and I learned this, that, you know, you, yeah, the, the, the electrics do make noise, but they make a different kind of noise. It's kind of a whiny noise. It's a higher frequency. And this is, there's, there's the whole science behind this. It's pretty interesting. A lower frequency travels farther. So that's why you can hear these things a quarter mile away. And they penetrate walls and especially glass much more easily than the high frequency does. So that's why, that's there. And then, of course, with the electrics, you don't have the, you've got formaldehyde, benzene. I mean, all these really awful toxins coming out of these things because they're a two-stroke engine which does not efficiently combust the gasoline. And there's no, there's no pollution control device on these things. They're just like technology from the 1950s.
The electrics make no noise when you're not actually blowing. That, which is another big thing.
Yes, yes.
The gas-powered, they're idling.
They're idling.
And they're loud when they're idling.
That's true.
Okay, so even within the window of gas-powered, if we, any discussion of shortening, let's say, the Saturday to go from, propose nine to six, to maybe nine to three? I mean, just to have some quiet on a weekend.
They're not permitted, I don't think, I mean, to Tina's point is, I think the, whatever noise ordinance we have already about these things, I think would encompass the electrics.
Okay, I mean, talking to gas-powered, shortening the window of the, during the day when people, so it sounds like there was.
Oh, I mean, during the months of November, December, and October.
Instead of going from eight to 7:00 PM, seems like a really long, a long day. I know that landscapers can't.
Well, I know it's, it's a long day if you're, if you, your, one neighbor starts at 7:00 AM and the next, you've got, you hear them all day and then somebody else is still doing it at 7:00. Yeah, it's a long day. But I, you know, to, you know, Bob's point, I mean, this is kind of their business too, so they. I mean, that's, I, I mean, I think that's something that is within, you know, your discretion, is, you know, the timing, you know. And Sunday is not permitted at all.
I think so.
On the hours, that's a great question. I think this is one where if everybody gets together and says nine months, there might be a, a good reason for the village managers to get together and say, okay, what are we, are we, are we okay with, what are you going to do with the timing? Because that was not, that's not really covered here, it's more.
So to answer your question on a municipality or two in Highland Park, we talked to the village manager there. And the village manager, an earlier statement about supporting if the neighboring community is doing the same, not varying their timeframes as currently written. They're also considering a longer spring term, but would follow the nine-month. And their current exemptions are all golf courses only. So that's for Highland Park.
Page 67 has the time.
But isn't there construction restriction in 7:00 to 12:00? I mean.
7:00.
I know, 7:00 AM.
7:00 to begin, but.
But there isn't, but there isn't.
Yeah, I think they can go till 7:00, but the weekends are shorter.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But Kim went shorter hours, so where are we going to?
Well, it all might become moot if everybody transitions to battery-powered. Then the noise is not so much of an issue. But so maybe this first year is a learning year where we figure out we might want to.
It looks like we're on the conservative end when you look at other villages. I mean, we're not an outlier with more hours. We're probably, so a lower hour, a lower hour villages.
I did see some eight-clocks on there. I thought I did when I was looking at.
My, well, Montclair, New Jersey.
Not in the neighborhood.
They sleep later.
I saw Lincolnwood cuts off at Saturday, but they're the outlier.
Yeah, so, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, we're open.
All right, a couple of things. All right, um, a couple of things on this, and personally, I just agree, I agree with the staff recommendation, so, but, um, a couple of questions. One, the recommendation is to exempt the park district golf courses, the village, what's good for the goose is good for the gander here. Do we know what this will cost the village in capital and manpower, just, have we looked at this?
Broadly, um, we don't have, to my knowledge, an extensive array of leaf blowers, because we contract out the service, and then we work with our contractor to encourage them to use electric, except for during the fall season when they need to do it. And they've been using it in the spring, during the months that allowed to, you know, when they're mulching areas of the, of public property. So our contractors have been voluntarily complying at our request, but we don't have a large inventory of leaf blowers, and I can't recall public works actually using them. For snow, we have a lot of other equipment that we use, so we really don't use it for the winter at all.
Okay.
So I don't think there'd be any cost, any material cost to us at all.
Park district?
Park district is a little different, they have a lot of in-house maintenance staff.
They have their in-house, so I think if, if we were thinking about, uh, not exempting the park district, we should get from them what the cost would be, and, you know, fair is fair, I would think, we wouldn't just mandate on that, that on them without.
Or do you not, on a, on a, on a.
Phase it in or something.
Remember, and, and, and there's other things at play here now, because now the golf course is not being managed by park district employees.
Right.
It's being managed by a private company, so it brings their own assets and resources and employees and everything. So I would feel less bad, because now it's gonna be on Kemper Sports' shoulders, not, you know.
Well, we'd have to look into the golf courses, I mean, you made the point that it's not as impactful with neighbors and residents as big areas, the, the time of the use, and, we'd have to look at that, but the park district for parks in town and so on, we'd have to get a sense of that.
Maybe a three-year, three-year phase.
Phase them in, or at least talk to the park district about it.
Or, uh, the golf course.
No, because, you know, they still have a, 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 a fairly, by Wenecta standards, a large holding in real estate here in town, and they do, like you just mentioned, Dwyer Park, I wake up to it at seven o'clock in the morning in West Ellen. Yeah. When, on Monday mornings, when it's their day to cut over there, so, uh, but if, at the same time, there is gonna be a hardship, because they're gonna have to go out and buy the equipment, and.
That's, that, that's gonna be true for everybody, that's gonna, for all, all landscapers.
I agree.
Yep.
And so, um.
But the only thing, King, is that, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the difference is, all these landscapers are buying the three hundred dollar ones like I have. I, most of the guys I see during the summer, because alls they're doing is blowing lawn clippings off the driveway and sidewalks, right? But the park district, since, I mean, just think of West Ellen Park or, or the Village Green, you know, you, you need a little bit more horsepower to get from the center of that property out to the edges where you can actually rake and collect, so.
Even in the, even in the, um, the summer months though, I mean, that's, because I, I would, I would, you know, my observation would be.
I don't know.
I, my observation would be that their, their leaf bro- volume issue is no different from a, you know, regular household. I mean, the, the, the heavy leaf volume for the park district is gonna be October, November, so. And then if they, if they, and if they can do the spring cleanup along with everybody else in, in April, I don't think they're at any kind of worse disadvantage, uh, and so, um, and I, what I am concerned about is things like this episode at Dwyer Park, I'm su- I'm sure that's not isolated, and, um, my wife Hope was down at the, the beach, Lloyd Beach, this, this last summer with a friend, just enjoying a nice day down there, and then the guys are there wailing away. There's really no good reason, I think, for most to use gas powered blowers on park district property than there is on private property. In, in, in the summer, you know, in the, in the, in the months we're talking, in the, the nine months we're talking about, and I, also, you know, the, um, the landscapers are adapting quickly, a lot of them, I mean, the big ones are, and, and especially, um, Rossboro is just rolling out its own, um, all-electric trailer now, and there's a number of other, um, other, there's other outfits, there, you know, there're chalet, other ones, they're, they're ready to go, and I think, would it require some, buying some equipment, probably, but is it, again, I, I, if you, if you exempt the park district for three years until everybody else, you gotta start in twenty-four, I think that's a good point, that's gonna be a problem.
But, but, but nonetheless, King, I think that we should.
Oh, yeah, no.
Approach the park district, maybe they will say, it's not a problem for us.
Yes.
We'll do that, so I think we should just, or we just.
No, that's, that's just smart, uh.
Governance, I would think.
Cooperation, inner, inner governmental cooperation.
Every time we talked about before, there's been pushback.
Okay, well, but, but now, but now we will be saying the village is going to be non-exempted.
Right.
You know, we're, we're moving in that direction.
Yeah.
One thing, King, I noticed in the, in the working group report, they talked about if it's a heavy, wet spring, providing administrative exemption to, or, uh, the ability to extend the April period into May. That was a recommendation of the working group.
Right.
Would we want to do that? I mean, if you had a really wet April, you know, could staff say, you know what, um, let's exempt that?
There was some language, somewhere in this thing, that, that basically said that the village manager gets to make the call.
Page thirteen.
There was, there was some language, if we had a huge rain and this.
That's, I, I, you know, this is very, it's a very interesting, uh, question, because this was raised by the landscaping group, and I, I don't know if this is the, the nose of the camel under the tent, like, you know, uh, but it, it, it does take that month of April, and if you can really extend it, um, too long, you've sort of defeated the purpose of, uh, eliminating these during, if, and it's, and, and I don't know that anybody has really articulated just how you would make that call. I mean, it's, it's, it could be very subjective in terms of like, you know, looking at the weather for the last two weeks, and, uh, you know, uh, and then, and then, and then, you know, I could see this, I'm thinking out loud, because this is not, the details of this have not been worked out yet, and it's, uh, so Willmet says, yeah, you can have another ten days, Glencoe says, no, it was not that rainy, you know, and then, well, Kellwood says, you can have another week, and then, so you've kind of, I mean, you can see how this could go a lot of different ways.
Yeah, but you could, you could be collaborative, it could be.
Yeah, I think so.
Staff would talk to other municipalities and.
We talk all the time.
Page ten of our packet, it says the public news is before, now, okay, the village manager may waive the enforcement of the foregoing restrictions upon determining that it's in the best interest of the safety and welfare of the village to use such leaf blowers to clean up or restoration, et cetera, so.
So, in, in the absence of anything more specific.
Common sense can prevail.
Exactly, oh, you'd, you'd look at historical rainfall, you know, what, what is April compared to, that April compared to prior Aprils, and. Exactly, so you.
Unless we have the microburst.
Well, yeah, exactly, and, and that can happen from, the big difference between Willmet and Highland Park.
I think the answer, Bob, is you, you just, you just trust the, the discretion of the village managers, and hopefully, if we have a Willmet to Highland Park stand, you know.
Agreement.
Then everybody gets together and says, okay, what are we gonna do collaboratively?
I think that's fine, and my last question is on the licensing. Tell me the, what's the rationale for the license, I mean, plumbers get licensed, I, I get all that, but is it to have this group, and they have formally been put on notice of what the regulations are? It's sort of, you pay your hundred dollars, you can now do work in the village, but by being licensed, you know what our program is here? Is that what we're, is that what this is?
So I, I would envision this somewhat taking place of the pledge, is eventually they would be coming in for a license agreement. Now Glencoe's got a very straightforward licensing agreement example, um, theirs is two pages long, and then it asks for the company and the, and the make and model of the cars that are in the community, uh, and then the liability insurance that accompanies them. To the contrary, Highland Park has a eighteen-plus page licensing agreement.
Wow.
To include every photo of every piece of equipment that is in the community.
Oh, my goodness.
I would recommend staff to follow Glencoe's agreement, but I would envision, I would envision that taking the place of our pledge annually.
Okay.
So if you have repeat violators, you can revoke the license.
You could track, it's an accountability.
It's, it's ability to revoke.
It's accountability, the other.
Notify the property owner, right?
Yeah.
That's really the, the point of purchase, that you're gonna affect people's behavior.
So when you see a truck in front of someone's home, you'll check, are they a licensed landscaper? And if they're not, we're gonna chase them away.
And so before this meeting, we talked to our records department about how we would do this process, and, and we think that we have a platform that we can keep track of those violations and the company that would be in violation, and if we were called or observed the same violation multiple times, it would get logged and eventually, uh, consideration of revoking their license.
Okay, but what about for those that don't get the license, unlicensed landscaper, will be monitored, so.
They wouldn't be on file on that same platform, and then they would be in violation of that too.
So typically, when someone needs a license in municipal work and doesn't have one, that you stop the work.
Right.
They go get the license, and then they resume the work, and usually that can be done pretty quickly.
I mean, it shouldn't be a, a big number, I mean, I'm thinking twenty-five bucks, it probably.
Well, yeah, we had a hundred, I sort of, we proposed a hundred, I sort of feel like there are plenty of landscapers that are, let's say, the unmarked trailer with a couple of guys, and, you know, I don't know if a homeowner who uses that kind of service and isn't using Rossboro or, or, you know, one of the bigger firms is.
But even some of the smaller ones are, are, have signed the pledge, I mean, like, there's, there's probably in the hover, or the, um, Forest Glen Circle, it's every day there's a different landscaper, and there's a couple of the smaller ones, and I was really surprised when I checked, and they're all in compliance and they signed the pledge, so, you know.
Yeah, I don't mind the license, I just, I, um, I was kind of thinking.
You give it to them so you can take it away.
But it's also a way to educate our community, right? So if you're using a landscaper, you may think they're in compliance, and if they lose their license, or if they continue, you know, violations, or they don't have a license, then the village can reach out to the homeowner and say, hey, this is our program, this is the reason why we have this program for the health and safety of people, and, you know, here's a list of compliant people, right? We could do that and use it as a way to.
It's a bit of a slippery, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Slippery slope, I mean, we don't add, do we have painters who come to our property and paint our homes, have to have a license to work in Wenecta? Or the cleaning crews that come, or, I mean, where do we say the line falls where we require contractors to have a license to just work in our community?
Well, a good example is all the, all the, uh, uh, construction trades.
Plumbers need to be licensed.
Right, they do, so that's why I'm sort of saying, there's a spectrum where.
I don't know, do we require painters to be licensed?
Painters, I don't, I don't think so.
It's anything that has to be inspected, right?
But typically, you'd have a light, when you have a set of regulations that require compliance throughout the course of the year, that usually you, there's a license that would go along with it.
So in this case, because we have something they have to comply with, we'd like to have a license.
That's the rationale behind it, then there's other trades that are required to have a license by either our code or state code,
State code.
and we wanna make sure they're all in harmony.
And, and the other piece is to be able to know who to go to if there's a problem. So with a painter, worst case scenario, they spill paint, which really isn't a village issue, I mean, it could be worse things.
No, that's.
But, but, but the, but the difference is here, I think, is, you know, you want, i- i- if there's an ongoing enforcement issue, the benefit of going after the company versus going after the guy who's been given a blower that's, doesn't meet our standards, and then fining him, but we know who to call, we can educate that person, uh, if it's their fourth violation, you know, have a conversation and then bring them in and take away their license. You know, so there, there's the ability to have somebody we know, like, take the building, when you do a building permit application, you're putting down who's getting the permit, the contractor, we have that information, so we can go after the, the contractor versus the individual tradesperson who shows up on that one day, a- and so we can deal with enforcement mechanisms, so that's one of the big benefits.
But I, I think, Ben, that we could maybe just make a little nod to the cost, increase cost to these landscapers and just reduce the license fee.
I agree, Ben.
I mean, I, I, you know.
To get a good database.
It's, it's already nominal, I get it, but the point is, charge them fifty bucks or whatever it is, to, to get them on record, we're not doing this to make money. I mean, we're not doing this to underwrite an education of the village, you know, that's not gonna do it, um, we're doing this just to get you formally on the rolls, and with the name of the people that we can go to, I, so I don't have a problem with the license, it's just.
A lot of times, a lot of times that costs, wherever, wherever the council wants to set the price is fine, but generally, the cost reflects the amount of administrative overhead to, to try to maintain it, but wherever you wanna set it is, is fine.
Do we have any sense of like what percentage of residents in town use the landscaping service versus doing their own? It would be interesting, it, it, it would be an awkward question, but I love it when people register to say, yes, I have roughly five customers, or I have twenty-five to fifty customers in town, or fifty to a hundred, I, it might be useful information at some point, um.
I've had people ask me what landscape company I work for.
Well, I mean, I'm really curious, I mean, obviously, we live in an affluent community.
Well, seeing you pushing a big thing around your lawn, I'd ask too. And then you slap your backpack on and go blow off.
Trust, trustee handler, hey, you could, you could ask the question, as you were saying, like in a range, um, but their customer base is gonna vary, as, you know, they may, they're gonna lose a customer, gain a customer, but approximately the number of customers you have per season would be easy enough to get.
I, I, I think Andy is, you know, very modern, that he's allowed to do that, I don't see a single person in my neighborhood doing their own.
It was our family business growing up, I, I couldn't not do it, I wouldn't be able to attend family functions, so.
A lot of people travel, a lot of people, you know, people, you know, it's, um.
Some people think of it as exercise.
Yeah, okay.
I, I'm probably one of only.
I'm one of them.
Wenecta who yells at my husband to come in and stop doing lawn work in Wenecta, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know, the modern world is different, my husband travels, you know, five days a week, right, so. So lots of play golf, ladies and gentlemen.
But my sense was that a significant percentage do, and so.
No, I know, I think it's hard, I, you know, I just, I just think there's a lot of landscapers in town.
And, and, and I have to say, I mean, when you send small contractors into a village hall or a, there's a lot of impact with that, because, you know, these are generally people that aren't used to, and going in there and having them fill out a paperwork and give them the twenty, there's a big message that goes with that, just simply by the physical presence of being at the, at the desk. And they walk out of there thinking, these people aren't screwing around.
And we take what they're doing seriously.
And now they have my phone number, you know, and my twenty-five bucks. But, but I remember that, that, you know, frequently, when I was doing smaller projects, inspector'd come out and one of the tradesmen, or one of the companies, like concrete contractor wasn't licensed in town, so they'd make him go over and buy the, buy his license before they let him pour the concrete, so. And it was always an aha moment for these guys, so I think that might be helpful just to get them to march in in here, get ready in March, because that's when you'll see them all.
You know, one of the things I liked about the, the pledge was, it, it gave, um, some of the service providers like an additional thing that they could point to, and it actually helped them, right? Um, and I'm wondering if, if there's any discussion about us maintaining a list, so we have our licensed contractors, if we can maintain a list of those contractors that provide electric-only leaf blower service if requested by the customer. So we can kind of have like, hey, if you wanna have three sixty-five a year, electric only, these companies on this list will give that to you, and, and I think that would give, you know, and I, I remember back in the day when we were starting up our family business, and it's a big deal, like, any little hook like that is a big deal, and it can help a lot, and so I, forget about, you know, enforcement, everything else, I just think it would be a good thing to do for those contractors.
It could be a, that could be a part of the education process for, because I, I'm sure there are, there are, there will be many people who say, yeah, I, I understand what the nine months sound, but I'd, I'd like to see if I could get somebody to do it year-round.
And, and it is doable, so even without making a huge investment in the electric, y- you know, y- and I, by the way, the work you guys did was just amazing, because you actually captured the different levels of cleanup, you know, from the, have no leaf left behind to sort of the more ecological approach. That's the way you do it, if, if you wanna provide the three sixty-five a year service without having to spend crazy money on electric leaf blowers. Because really, all you're supposed to use the, the blower for is the, the beds, where the leaves get tangled, because the rest of it you capture with the mowers. You know, and, and you also do a quick sweep, you know, sidewalks after you mow, and that, that's it, but what you. But what you tend to see with some of these companies is they get the army of leaf blowers going and they just...
Do the whole lawn, right.
Instead of using the four-cycle engines, which are much quieter on the mowers, you know, so...
Well, see, there are some people that don't want the leaves and their clippings mulched into their grass. And so that's what the army is doing, right?
Which is absolutely nuts, because then what we do is we put fertilizer down.
Yes, right. That's what the homeowner's requesting versus doing what's...
That's, that's the education piece, I think.
Yeah.
And I think there's a great opportunity, given how popular the composting program is. I think that the folks who have been moving into the village and, you know, just a generational difference, I think they'll be really, to the point, harness that green nature and advertise that and educate it.
If you do it the ecological way, and our lawn is by no means perfect. We have not added any form of fertilizer, weed killer, or anything in eight years. And it's because we mulch. And everything that comes down on the property, for the most part, state, there's maybe a week or two where it's just, we're overwhelmed with leaves. But otherwise, everything goes, you actually don't blow it out of the beds. You mow it, knock it down, and you blow it back into the beds. So I, if we had a list like that of, like, the ecological sort of approach, I think that'd be...
Green-certified landscapers.
Well...
We could even publish a list of all the licensed landscapers, and the green-certified would get top billing.
I want to be announced.
Yeah.
And that's what you use, you know, to the extent we have a little extra licensing fee, I would put it towards promoting those people.
Yeah, that's, that's a great...
I thought, I thought there was some issue between, with, in a sense, implied recommending contractors. The village recommending contractors to people, which...
We wouldn't be recommending it, same.
No, we're not technically recommending, so it's just a list of who's licensed in the community.
And who's offering the service.
Yes.
And like with tree removal, we have a list of who we know does the work we don't recommend to.
Right, we do that with plumbers too, with, you know, who's done, you know, drainage work on your property, your properties, things like that. And just to be clear, I mean, anybody could join that list. It's not that you have to do anything other than make a commitment, but it would be open to every single landscaper who wanted to. And that's also one of the distinctions. Versus saying, we're gonna only recommend the ones that we like, and tough luck, we don't know you. You don't get recommendations. So there's no favoritism whatsoever.
So I mean, I think it's important for people to understand that they might think it's a recommendation, but it's not.
But Ben, if we did it through licensing, and we could say, these are the licensed ones, and if, you know, this is not, you know, if you know, if your landscaper isn't licensed, is on this list, please, you know, encourage them to get licensed. We could do it that way, right?
You can, so you can certainly have a list of licensed landscapers. And if you wanted to have a program where for those who were making a commitment to be all-electric or meet certain environmental standards and say, these are all the landscapers, in addition to being licensed, who are, we certify as, you know, green or whatever tag you want to give them, there's nothing wrong with that.
You could even literally make a checkbox on the license application.
They'd have to certify not the village.
Right, but, but we could have a list of those who...
Yes.
Yeah.
That, you could add just a checkbox on the license application that says, you, you, yeah, you pledge that you're... Well, so, I mean, you could just say, you know, you, you pledge that you will provide three sixty-five a year, electric, whatever, however we want to phrase it, upon request of the customers, that you'll, you know, that that's a service you offer. They don't have to, they don't necessarily have to do it for me, but if the homeowner wants it, yeah.
For all equipment though, right? For all equipment, not just the leaf blowers.
I would start with the leaf blowers, because, yeah, the, the state of electric mowers is not...
Not great.
No.
Just going back to licensing rollout, would it be possible, as, let's say, we're, I know we'll do a great job communicating with all the mechanisms we have to let people know they have to be licensed, but the first time you would come upon a landscaper who isn't licensed, would they just get a warning the first time and say, please go get a license, or would they actually, you know?
I, I would, I would want to educate, we are starting something new all over again. And, and my intention would be to educate and maybe have a process where they go to village hall, talk to the finance department already, apply for a license, and they can return. But yes, I, I would not be looking to enforce right away.
Because I'm sure, yeah, again, probably ninety percent will get the message, but there will be some that may not.
The administrative and education aspect of this will be the heaviest in the first two years. And then it'll, it'll level out, just like the pledge, I think.
Yeah, the pledge was pretty successful.
Yeah, yeah, but it took a couple of years.
It was pretty successful, because it was something that was appealing to the contractors themselves.
I thought that Mark said that first year, like, in June, he had identified seventy landscapers.
Yeah, wow.
He had half on that pledge, and they were, what were they?
Yeah.
That was very successful, and it's, yeah, you put that list in the record as well.
There were a couple who didn't honor their pledge, and we had to have a conversation with them, but they, they came around.
Yeah, village president got his nose stuck in there a couple of times too.
Hey.
Can't help it, I'm sorry.
So in addition to, I think Bob recommended having a meeting, you know, heads-up park district. I think we should do the same for the school districts and any other schools, any other institutions, and maybe the chamber. Because I have seen some of the blowing of snow by some of the, you know, property management companies in the commercial area. So I think that we should reach out to all those potential stakeholders and...
So are you suggesting...
Just to, if, if and when we...
Advise them or solicit their input?
Well, I, you know, I guess Bob's concern, I think, is well-founded, you know, how much is it gonna, you know, what kind of financial impact? You know, maybe, you know, maybe the park district is the one that's impacted the most, but you, you would think that the school district would be on board. Yeah.
I'm really biting my tongue on this, this issue right now.
No, I know. But I'm just saying, I think we should think more broadly than just the park district and whether it's a, this is what we're gonna do, and do you have, you know, is it gonna have a, I don't know if you want to open that door, but...
Under this, Tina, it sounds to me like the schools would not be exempt, I mean...
No, they wouldn't.
As it stands right now.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So the only groups were the village, park district, and the golf courses. Those were the three that...
Not the park district.
Well, no, but I mean, in other communities, one or two would be exempted, or none, or whatever.
Yeah, and I think...
But the schools were never mentioned. They would just be part of this program.
Yeah, I think that's...
And I'm just saying, we should give them a heads up.
You should give them a heads up, yeah.
Is that what you were hearing, King, that, that, that kind of fell under that institutional...
Yeah, I know that, I think it, this is where you may have some variations, because, for instance, Glencoe's got, it's got two golf courses, as I recall, you know, and so, and same with, like, Wilmette, and...
No, I'm talking about the, the schools.
The schools. I would think if, you know, you're gonna, there's, there's no justification, as I see it, to exempt the schools.
They're, they're the ones you want the protection of most of.
I'm just saying, we should notify them, yeah.
So one, I think, is just hearing what you're all saying, there'd be parks, schools, library, chamber, private schools, institutions, religious organizations, right?
Yeah.
So those that have little larger-scale properties would all be part of that reach out.
And then I think the commercial building owners.
Yeah.
I think the question is, are you reaching out to notify or you want to engage them? Because I wouldn't be particularly interested in further engagement at this point.
No, I, I think it's notification.
We'll be talking about this in three years if we go down.
And then, you know, right.
Right, because, you know, there's always, you can always have a, like, oh, this is gonna be, it's gonna, we're gonna have to... I mean, I think the only real burden would be, you know, the, the library, you know, they probably contract out. And I, the schools, I don't know if they, what they do, but I think that's more than a burden.
Well, and that was gonna get to my second point. If all these eleven communities are kind of orienting and getting on the same page, or at least a good number of them, have we, has some sort of Go Green Winnetka or the Go Green Alliance thought about reaching out to some of the manufacturers? And then also, you know, think about broadening this to try to, you know, say, and, you know, there's, you know, there's trade-in events. You know, this would not be something that the village would sponsor, but I'm just saying, are there opportunities to help people convert? You know, and institutions.
There are a lot of opportunities.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that's something that either...
So that when we have those conversations, we can put that information...
And I think there's also an opportunity to collaborate, you know, if there's, and if you have buying power with different, you know,
Right.
municipalities get together, we'll, it's, I think we're kind of limited by our imagination there.
Right.
There's a lot of good ways to approach this, and that's, that's a good way to look at it.
To, to be clear, though, the staff recommendation is to exempt the park district.
No, just the park, just the golf course of the park district.
Surrounding municipalities moving to a similar ban are generally proposing exemptions for golf courses and park district property. Staff recommends Winnetka remain consistent with the surrounding municipalities. So it sounds to me like, hey, you know...
What page is that?
That's, uh, page eight.
Yeah, I think there was like...
Well, if you know, if you know, if John was here right now, he'd be screaming bloody murder.
Well, this is what I'm saying, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here. Do we want to...
I received a, a notice for a, a big, broad-reaching grant application.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And, you know, because on that, on, on, on that dimension, I don't see how we can build in...
No.
Money for that in the budget.
No, no, no. I'm just suggesting...
But if we could go out and find some grant dollars that, that were coming from an outside source, that we could build a fund with, that might be a different animal.
Or to put the park district or the other people heavily impacted in contact with them.
Trustee Dear Warren, to your, to your point, just the notes that we, we collected is, is Glencoe is currently, uh, the all exceptions, exemptions is the golf courses, the park district property. That's Glencoe. Wilmette is the same as current exemptions, except for the golf courses, park district property. They even have cleaning and clearing of public roadways in there. And Northbrook is no exemptions, but if the park district says that they're not ready to comply, the village will reconsider. So those are the communities around us. That, that's where they're at, just from the research that we did.
I think we have to, personally, I think we have to lead on this and, and not use the other communities as a... On, on this particular thing, I, I really think that we need to, we've heard it about the park district for years now. And our parks are really, we have a lot of small parks in neighborhoods, and the impact, I think, is greater. I mean, it's different when you're, you know, the other side of Waukegan Road and you've got, look at Northbrook Parks. I mean, they're, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty acres. They're huge parks.
Yeah.
And they're out there, right? And ours are in here, and they're small, and the guys show up and make a lot of noise. So I, I, I don't see how we can exempt them. I'm empathetic, but hey, we all gotta get on the program with this.
That's fine.
And it's, it's not a complete ban.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's fine.
I, I agree.
It's a, I mean, the good thing is, and I think the answer to them is, you still have April, October, November.
And you still have until two thousand twenty-four.
Right.
Just like the rest of us.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
Yeah, I think...
But that's different than the recommendation. We should just, you know, if we may...
And maybe like Northbrook, if, if, if Winnetka comes to us and says, we really need the gas power blowers for skokie playfields, because it's a large area and, you know, we need that extra power because of the rubber pellets or whatever. I mean, who knows? But, you know, that'd be the sort of thing you could consider. But I think the neighborhood parks, much to King's story on Dwyer Park, is the sort of thing we just can't tolerate anymore.
I think that's just, yeah, and just like the beach too. I mean, beach in the summer, there's, there's no, there's just no excuse to let the park district continue to.
And if they want to tidy up, they can use an electric, right?
Yeah, in the summertime, it's not gonna be a burden for, for those places. But yes, I, and that's why, to Bob's point, having a conversation would probably be a, just, but hopefully they get on board. I mean, I, I think they want to do the right thing too, right?
So if I haven't said it, I'm fully on board with the recommendations with no exemption. And with the addition of kind of that service provider list of those that will offer that.
You'd exempt the golf course, though?
No.
No?
I wouldn't even have a golf course if it was up to me.
Yeah, we've had that discussion. We want to...
Okay, well.
Go golf somewhere else.
They'd probably get used more too, right, Andy? Okay, so let's, let's just go through the list and make sure we've got what we need to give the gang their, their orders here. Nine months. We all on board with that?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the rest of it? I lost them now.
It's, uh, page eight.
Page what?
Page eight.
Nine month, no exemption, licensing.
Well, exemption for golf courses, right? I thought that was...
No.
I'm, I'm no on that, but others might feel that.
Oh, I, I, I think that, I think that would require a lot more information. I don't think, I don't think, I support the exemption for golf courses.
I kind of do too. I mean, you're out in the middle of, I mean, it's less impact. I mean, I know it's not as pure, but...
What if you did the approach of let them come and ask for it? If they think they need more than April, October, November, make them ask for it and explain it to the public, because the public is...
Because if September is light leaf fall, they can use the battery-powered ones.
Yeah.
So it's not, we're not saying they can't...
Well, and they can still use gas, April, October, November.
It's just the volume of area. You're gonna, I don't know if the battery, I mean, you just have tons of trees.
No, batteries won't be enough.
Right, I mean, you have tons of trees.
We didn't talk about this in general, but I, and I know that this work has been done over a year. I learned more about battery-powered leaf blowers than I ever thought I would today. And there's even a newer model, no surprise since this was done, that almost equals a powerful gas bar. So we know over the next year that technology is only gonna continue to improve, so...
Well, but as technology improves, you're gonna ask them to spend a lot more money.
Well, even now, the new one is within the...
You woke up. I know. That was scary. I thought, oh shit, my time is here.
It was like an announcer voice.
Don Corning, Don Corning.
I'm sorry, Rob, could you repeat that for us? We were all a little bit shocked by your intervention there, so...
Sorry. Sorry about that, guys. No, I, I, I normally would say, I agree with the, having the golf course, the theme work. I think I wouldn't mind asking them ahead of time if we're gonna be fair about this. I think they may go along with it if we just put it in those terms that we say, here, here's what we're proposing versus making them, you know, find out about it and then come to us. I think we should be upfront.
What about Indian Hill? Is that in the corporate limits?
That helps.
So we're really talking about one golf course?
Yeah. So maybe if we talk to them before something's introduced, find out what their...
If they're just apoclectic.
Well, then, then we can at least take a vote, and I'll tell them what I think, and then take their positions.
Yeah.
I walk my dog in there in the fall, and there is just so many leaves. I mean, um, you know...
Who's that?
The golf course.
Oh.
You go in from whatever, the Bell Woods. Yeah.
Of course, I won't be here, so...
That's true. But you can always share your opinion.
The incremental cost, the incremental cost we'd be talking about is, let's say, them wanting to use leaf blowers in, gas-powered leaf blowers in September versus a battery-powered leaf blower. Because they're allowed to use them in October, November. So the incremental cost to them is, I mean...
True.
Really just that one month. And I mean, I looked at it certainly, as the statistics or the numbers show, it's roughly twelve thousand outfit, a two-man crew versus twelve hundred. But that's twelve thousand for two men amortized over a year that's used, you know, it certainly is an incremental cost.
Right, I'm just thinking of wood...
But the incremental cost of the park district for the golf course isn't for the entire maintenance of the golf course.
Right. What I'm thinking about is that there are places on that golf course, and at least as my memory serves, that have woodchip paths. I could see if there's flooding events. It's hard to move the woodchips, I, I would assume, without a leaf blower. So I, that's the only thing I would suggest.
Hey, hey, King, I have one other question, which is, if it takes somebody fifteen minutes to blow with a gas-powered blower to clear something, how much longer would it take with an electric blower? Is it thirty minutes? Is it double the time? Is it about the same?
That really, it, it depends greatly on time of year. If it's October, November, you might have a big difference. There might be no difference, I suspect, for the other... I suspect for the other nine months that we're talking about, I think it's zero difference, basically. Because, you know, you'll, you'll see this, it's almost like, uh, you know, particularly with the example I gave with, uh. Lloyd Beach, there, there was no real leaves to, to move in August, and so, I mean, uh, but that's what, that's, I, I think that's the. The whole point of this nine month is that to give the landscapers the tools they need when they need the most.
Yeah, I think we agree, I think it's great.
Okay, so.
So we'll, we'll certainly ask.
Are we exempting or not exempting the golf course? I'm still confused on this. Andy says exempt.
I would exempt them, not exempt.
I would not exempt them.
We got two for non-exempt.
I, I just, I, it seems to me that I don't know enough about it, it is true that Kemper's gonna take over the management. And maybe this is a restriction that they face on other golf courses, I just, you know, it's such a large territory, I just would like to know more.
Having spent some unproductive time on golf, um, what I've seen in the, you know, the, the green months. Is heavy, you know, rain events where the grass is, grows tall and they got it, that's where they use the leaf blowers, but also after a storm event.
Yeah.
Where you have a lot of debris that comes from the trees and they gotta try to get it collected, so that's where I've seen them using them in the, kind of the peak times of the year. I don't know, Brian, do you have any other thoughts?
I've also spent plenty of useless time on the golf course. I, I agree with, uh, the village manager, I, I, what's really, really nice about this golf course is that it's always in.
Great shape.
Really great shape.
Yeah.
And it draws customers and it's, um, a really nice place to play. And I, and I, and I agree that when there's events, uh, that would be during this ban, it would, it could partic, it could take them longer. And, and anybody that's played golf doesn't like to try and find a golf ball underneath a leaf, so. I'm always in the woodchips, so I.
I am always in the woodchips too.
You get a free throw.
I can just appreciate, I could just appreciate the conversation we, we may have.
But that, that said and done, to Andy's point, I don't want to give, I don't want to give them carte blanche to just abuse it all year round, they need, if they need it. Let's find out if they really need it and when they'll need it.
The effective date isn't really gonna be January first, twenty twenty-four for the golf course, cause it's not playable until.
Till September twenty twenty-four.
It's gonna be gorgeous too, right?
This isn't even really a relevant issue until twenty-five. So if they haven't had time to replace their equipment by May of twenty twenty-five, they're never gonna do this.
But again, they could still use the leaf blowers in the key months.
But I think the question is.
But there's nothing for them to even maintain until September of twenty-four.
So my, my only thing that I'd like to understand better is whether replacement of equipment gives them the same ability to maintain. You know, this great asset that we have.
Well, it's not a great asset, which is why we've paid how many millions of dollars to rebuild it for them? Right, and so the flooding and stuff.
Disagree, Andy, because like, I, I think of all the hundreds of kids who go out there and, you know.
What I'm saying is, the new golf course, the theory behind it is that it won't be flooding.
As much.
As much.
Well Tina, we've heard that the reason we need gas-powered is in certain months when that additional power is needed. And we're still allowing them to do that, the other months aren't as heavy, so the electric ones are just fine, which they still have access to.
So that's what I'm challenging, cause I do play golf, I've played, I've walked that course probably hundreds of hours with my kids who played on the golf team. You know, I just don't know if an electric-powered, cause we have electric blower and, you know, honestly, it doesn't. Maybe it's not the most state-of-the-art, but I'm not sure, it can do all the things to move twigs and things. I would just like, before, you know, just personally, I think we should ask.
Yeah, I would like to.
Get more information on that.
I'd like to talk to Kemper and find out.
Yeah, and maybe the, it's, and maybe they say, no problem, we've decided as a company that that's part of our, you know, reducing our carbon.
Sense to ask and to get that information, so you, you're all informed when you do vote. I would just be inclined, if I was voting, which I won't be, to say, no exemption.
Let's just agree that we will include the exemption on the ordinance and we will. By the time the ordinance gets up to us, which won't be for another month.
Maybe you can sort it out by then.
We'll learn if there's.
What do you mean, include the exemption, so you'll exempt the golf course?
Well, no, no, I, I meant just the opposite.
Yes, no exemption.
No exemption, so, and then we can always, if the information comes back, I mean, we're not gonna be stupid about it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if Kemper comes back and just says, we just can't do it, but I want to talk to Kemper, because. Everything else aside is, there's a reflexive response that you're gonna get from Costa and John. That is absolutely not, we can't, we can never live with it, ever, and I've heard that from him already. So, I'd rather hear from the people who do it all over the world and see what, you know, what their opinion on it is.
To your point, we're looking seventeen months, wait, how many months out? September twenty twenty-four.
And again, Kim, I don't think the issue is really the, the, the cost of the equipment, because. Let's say you equip two crews, you know, twenty-five grand.
That's what I, yeah.
It's, it's a drop in the bucket when, when you think about the amortized cost, but if they just need the, the raw horsepower to do stuff.
If it's the storm cleanup issue like Tina's talking.
Yeah, well, I mean, but there's gonna be, I would imagine automatic exemptions for storms and things of that nature.
High growth season, grass is where you see.
I don't know if they, if they blow the dew off the greens in the morning with leaf blowers or whatever.
No, they might, I mean, they have a lot of tournaments there, I mean, you know, it's a wonderful asset for the village.
It's a teaching course.
So just, we're all, Rob, are you okay with this too? We'll come in with the course non-exempt, we'll get the information and by the time this gets to us, we'll have a better understanding and we can modify.
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay, so, check. Annual licensing?
Great work, I'm so excited.
We're good on the licensing, twenty, I'm just double checking, twenty-five bucks? Rob? Twenty twenty-four, we're all cool with that?
Yep.
And the nine month, we're good? Does it sound like, sound like a plan?
Yeah, it's a great plan.
Will we?
Rob, don't bring it back until we at least get the info, you know.
So will we, when we see the ordinance, we'll have the actual dates, not just nine month, so I just want to make sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very specific.
That's just a shorty.
Yeah, I know, I know, I figured.
No, Ben's gonna mail this one in, so. It'll be three months of whatever your choice.
How are you feeling this year?
Great, well, King, thank, thank you.
Well, my, uh, thanks for the kind words, I want to, I want to thank you all and it, it's just been a, a really great collaboration with all these municipalities. And this is real progress for so many ways. I really, you know, credit you all for your, your interest in what you're doing and I think this, and I think when you see this. Assuming the other villages, we know Willmett and Glencoe are gonna be going nine months, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a collaboration. Like we've, we've never seen with municipalities for something that's like this and it's, um, it's a great opportunity for education, so.
Well, I want to thank you personally and, and obviously Go Green Winnetka for pushing us to the front. Because I don't think we would have found our way into that leadership position on our own. It took the passion and commitment of, of people who really care about this stuff and alls I do is bitch about it, so I mean, it's. I'd never be willing to go to all these meetings and talk about leaf blowers, so thank you.
Well, it was, it's, it's been an education, as, as these, as these things always are with the village council, so you, you learn a lot and, uh, you know, I thank you all for.
And many people on Nextdoor will be very happy, if you, if any of you follow Nextdoor, it's often a frequent post.
Yeah, I think, and, and things like this, I mean, really, I just want to just make a, a pitch for the education part of it, you know, the more we can do. It's, uh, you know, I, I go back to Louise's, this, and, uh, I want to go back to Louise's presentation, what was that, four years ago, Chris?
No, 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 the student, the, the.
Oh, yeah.
Fourth grader.
Yes, that's what started this whole conversation.
Yeah, yeah, so this, I, I want to, I want to just give her some credit, she's probably in eighth grade now.
Yeah, probably.
If you haven't seen this, if you've seen the, if you have not seen the YouTube, she is so impressive, this ten-year-old, I think.
She shamed us into it.
And she had all the facts, all the right reasons, and it's.
It's powerful.
It is.
I was hoping she'd be here this evening, but you know, if she's a high schooler, I wouldn't.
Recognize what, you know, the, the power of a child's voice on something like this, so.
The Chicago Tribune wrote a story about that.
They did.
About her, yeah, and during that meeting, I, I challenged people, I said, if anyone really wants to protect these things, write me an angry email. And it got, that part was republished in Tribune, and I did get two angry emails.
Really?
Two, just two. Some angry people and.
None of those out there?
No, uh, but then I went back and forth with them and then they were less angry and I think they got sick of me, but, yeah. So, I don't think there's gonna be a groundswell of Winnetka public support for these leaf blowers wherever they might be used. So just, I would bear that in mind, cause that.
Yeah, well, once people get used to more quiet and cleaner air.
Yeah.
It's, I think there's, there's sort of a, a.
It's an easy trade.
It's a, it's an easy transition over time.
And last summer, we got spoiled and realized how nice it could be without those things and it was, it was a difference. All right, are these all copyrighted, King? I mean, can we steal this stuff?
No, these aren't copyrighted, I think, uh, we always steal from each other's.
Oh, really?
I think this, 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 this is either Glencoe or, uh, Willmett.
Yeah, I mean, we can reform it, but I think the messaging is really good and all of this stuff.
It's so, what I like about it is, as I said, it's so friendly and neighborly, you know, it's like. Yeah, no, he's not, yeah. So, all right, gang, uh. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in pair?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.